So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending. This is a continuance of our meeting regarding the Pleasant View Neighborhood Association request for a moratorium. Before we go any further, I'm going to ask Kathy Ford, our timekeeper, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so some opening remarks, some rules of play. Every individual speaker will be given three minutes. The applicant will be given 15 minutes to speak. The applicant, in this case, being the case for the moratorium. If you have spoken before, I would ask if you wouldn't mind deferring your time to someone else, so we can get through this this evening and be able to deliberate as well. On the other hand, if you do have additional information that you wish to present, by all means, come forward. So it'll be three minutes, 15 minutes for the applicant. And before I go any further, I would ask our Director of Community Development, David Callahan, to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Just a reminder that tonight's hearing is a continued hearing from your October 9th meeting. At that hearing, we discovered and shared with you just, we discovered a few days before the hearing, I mean, that the map we had relied on to notice the hearing was actually different from what the Pleasant View Neighborhood Association wanted for the moratorium area. So that's why we asked at that hearing that you continue to, at the end, a date uncertain, it's worked out to be tonight, so that my staff and the Neighborhood Association could fine tune the map. We have done that. We've used it to renotice. We sent out 565 notices for tonight's hearing. That's some 53 more than were sent out at the last hearing. That does include a 500-foot buffer all the way around the proposed area, which also picks up residents that live in the state of Washington. So for people that got noticed in that area, that's why. We were just trying to be helpful. In rough numbers, the last hearing, you had about 80% of people that responded in favor of the moratorium. In tonight's hearing, it's roughly the same, about 78%. The actual numbers work out to be, I believe, 52 in support and 15 opposed. We, just by the way of information, I wanted you to be aware, we have, in the last year, processed three minor subdivisions within this area. One of them has been approved because minor subdivisions are something that I approve, literally an administrative decision, and two are pending. They're both in the agency review comment period. I bring that up expressly because if you are inclined to approve any moratorium for any duration, I would request that in the motion, you make it clear that any case in the mill is allowed to go forward, or whatever your desires are. I'd like to have clarity, is my point.
Fair enough.
The one other thing I can add, unless you have questions of me, is just a reminder that, under state statutes, you have the right to grant up to 182-day moratorium, provided you find imminent peril to the public health, safety, and welfare, and that needs to actually be in writing when we go to the order, or the solution of this. I hope that helps, and let me know if there's anything else that I can add to tonight's hearing.
Any questions for Director Callahan? Okay, I need to poll my co-commissioners and myself as well for conflicts of interest. Any?
None.
None for me. Okay, then. So we'll begin this evening with the applicant, or the person speaking in behalf of the association in the moratorium, and that's Mr. Tony Ambrosetti. Sir, go right ahead. Kathy is our timekeeper, so we do want to pay attention. Kathy, what does the yellow light signify, 30 or 60?
Yellow would be 30 seconds remaining, posing our, posing comments.
Honorable Commissioners, good evening. I'm Tony Ambrosetti. I live at 1140 South Baker Lane. Post Falls, Idaho is the mailing address, but it is in the area that we lovingly refer to as Pleasant View, and has been called Pleasant View for decades, over a century. I come to you tonight with a brief presentation to just go into a little more detail on why we think there really truly is, I mean, in peril, in an extremist situation in the Pleasant View area regarding groundwater and the very, what we consider to be a drastic depletion of wells based on anecdotal evidence. And we can show you that, and I'll come touch on that in just a moment. Here is what I would like to talk about tonight. Again, I'll try to keep this as brief as possible. We'll talk a little bit about what the moratorium request is and isn't. We will look at well density impacts, especially as provided by the U.S. Geological Survey. We'll, we'll look at the Pleasant View area geology, which is very important, but, as we'll see, not necessarily something that'll help us view where groundwater is. And, and then we'll talk about water availability, look at some of the well data that we've compiled, a map of the more impacted wells, and our recommendation, and really based upon our request, why we're making this, and what we think, what our recommendations are for the longer run. So, first of all, before I, before I go into what this, what the moratorium request is, I would like to tell you what it is not. I think there is, there is a misconception. There's a misconception that we're trying to stop development, and that's not what this is about at all. We are not trying to do that. The moratorium request is not a request to stop single residential development. It is not an attempt for local residents to control how they utilize their property, especially regarding such things as building on already existing parcels. We haven't even addressed ALUs, and maybe that will be something we have to down the It is not a selfish movement by a small group. It is, as you'll see, a very, very widespread problem that we're trying to get a handle on, and I think we already are behind the power curve, unfortunately, on it. We have to do something. What it is, is a temporary moratorium on subdivisions. Condominium plant unit developments. It is to allow for some testing, analysis, comparisons especially. Our working group, our inter-agency groundwater working group, which met on November 1st, and will be meeting again soon, we hope, is actually, I've been working on, trying to pinpoint exactly where these wells are, locating which wells from the most impacted, have some good historical information on the IDWR, the Idaho Department of Water Resource website, and going back to those logs and seeing just how much these have been impacted. It's one thing to say, oh, yes, we're down quite a bit, and it takes this long to fill my cistern now. But what we'd really like to see is, how much of a decrease has there been? More than just anecdotally, we'd like to see what has been the decrease based on what the well logs were in the first place. And that's what this moratorium hopefully will give us time to do. So the goal is to provide substantiated development guidelines ultimately, which preserve our rural quality. And this is for everyone. We speak, whether they know it or not, even for the people that come to oppose us tonight, because it is really for their own good that we not deplete the water. We're not trying to tell people how to use their property, but water doesn't stop at property lines. That's the problem. The water, we don't know where it goes. We don't know where it is. We know some, some, in some ways, but trying to predict water availability is a very difficult thing. And so to try to make this into some sort of property rights issue is absolutely irrelevant to the situation. Groundwater has nothing to do with property rights. It crosses property lines. And here's an example, for one. This came out of the U.S. Geological Survey. I think many of you have seen this before. The U.S. Geological Survey shows that the closer proximity of dwellings and wells do impact on waters, creating crones of depression. Now, this is a little bit, this, what we're seeing here is a little bit misleading. We do not have an aquifer like that. We have fissures and cracks and, and perhaps some cavernous areas where the water, small cavernous areas where the water is situated. But the impact is, is really critical when we're looking at the amount. And by the way, we're not even talking about this, the quality of the water. The more you get out there in a small area, then you've got the effluent going into the ground, and we really have to look at that. Where's it going? Is it following the potable water, the groundwater crevices and fissures? Just to give you an idea, let's put one more house on this one, and let's think back to a preliminary, a preliminary request that was made about a year ago, in which a property owner called and said, "I've got 23, 24 acres. I want to subdivide." It was given a pre-number. I don't remember what it was. It was something like pre-19 or something. In any event, the property owner owns three of those parcels, three 20-plus acre parcels. And this property owner is calling to talk about developing the first one, which, of course, raises alarms about the other two. So put one more house on here, and then put two more parcels with four other houses each on there. And where we had three wells, we now have 12 wells. Now, what about the geology? Well, if you can see, most of our Pleasant View area is metamorphic rock. Metamorphic rock, it simply means it's a rock that has changed. It might have changed from other metamorphic, but generally, it changed from a sedimentary or a...
Igneous?
Igneous. That's exactly what I was looking for. And you know igneous is the one that is the magma, you know, more volcanic related. So, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
So what do we have? We have rocks with fissures is what we have, fissures and cracks. We do not have the luxury of this beautiful aquifer out here on the Rathrum Prairie. We have water in rocks, fissures, and very small havens, so to speak, holes inside the Sometimes these are, and often are, in metamorphic rock, foliated. But the foliation, we have to be careful of, because the foliation, the strata don't necessarily follow the way that the lay of the ground is. So you can't just say, well, gee, Mr. Smith wants to develop his 24 acres and put four houses there, four, wants to develop into four parcels. We've got to go and check the people up, up above him. Well, that's not the way it works. We don't know where that water comes from. The strata could be completely different, and often is, inside. The local water availability is already impacted. It's unpredictable. You don't know when you're going to drill if you're just drilling a dry hole. I have a neighbor who has a thousand-foot dry hole that he paid $20 a foot, which is actually fairly inexpensive, I guess, but that's a $20,000 dry hole that he has sitting there. He can use, I suppose, as a, a cistern to bring water in by truck, and many people are bringing water in by truck. It's unknown water resources out there, unknown volumes. The refresh rates, we have no idea. We need to find out about refresh rates. We, we just don't know and understand enough about it, and we need some time, some breathing room, before we keep chopping it up out in Pleasant View. Here is, hopefully, something that will really open one's eyes. As you can see, 58% of the wells are either unproductive, severe decrease, or mild to moderate. Now, granted, these are anecdotally provided. We don't have scientific data. We have people who have come forward and say, 42% have said either they haven't seen a change, or they have not officially measured to know whether they've been impacted or not. But this is, it's striking when you look at it. That's the only way to, to, to describe it. And they can't sustain normal household use. People have put in cisterns. The cistern business is, excuse me, the cistern business has really, will be taking off. The water truck business has really taken off, hauling water in. Air One purchased a new one this year, and they're going to have another one. Supposedly, this is what we've heard. Here, I plotted the, the black, orange, and red that we saw before here. There's a black one missing right there. For some reason, I didn't get it on there. But you can see, black is basically a dry hole. Red, I made the red bigger so that it didn't, so that you could tell the difference between the red and the orange. I know it's a little difficult with the color, but, but you can see that the impact, we don't have a way of saying, oh, well, this area must be the bad part. This area must be the good part. It is all the way across. And I think as we continue to do our study, we'll see that there is no way to really So based on current well and testimonial data, anecdotal data from property owners, what we're asking and what we're recommending of the commissioners is to approve the moratorium to provide some time for us in the inter-agency groundwater working group, which is represented by Community Development, Idaho Department of Water Resources, and Panhandle Health, and PVNA, to give us time to try to bring, try to come at and arrive at some good, strong, solid recommendations for you. This is really what we want to do. Now, a real study like this could take years. We don't have years. We have six months. But at least it gives us some breathing room to come back and say, here's what we found in the last six months. But in the meantime, it makes no sense, I submit, and I hope you agree with us, it makes no sense to continue to do business as usual with continuing to process subdivisions, even minimum, even minor subdivisions, if we can at least begin to gather data for recommendations. We don't want to be really sawing off the limb while we're sitting out on the limb. Anything that we learn, as you can see, common measurements, understanding of water availability. What's, let me see if I can fix that. There we go. And the result of the research methods may include ideas for more data collection, all kinds of possible ways that we can, we can research this. We don't have a lot of money to do it, so it's going to be based on people being able to either do their own or going out. We do have three test wells right now that IDWR and I have been monitoring and working with, but we'd like to do many, many more. And, and that's what my intent is, to really knuckle down and compare the current outputs of these wells to what those well logs said 20, 30, 40 years ago, because that's the, that's the disappointing part about the process, is that when someone submits, when a developer submits a, a request for a minor subdivision, he can use well drilling logs from 30, 40 years ago. They're irrelevant. They're long, they're passe, they're not even something worth using, they're not worth the paper they're written on anymore, for the most part. At least 58% of the time, we know that anecdotally. We're recommending water testing, monitoring processes, devices, data to better fit land use, understanding water availability. This is what we get with a moratorium. Is there an emergency? I submit, and we submit, there is, Commissioners. We submit there is. Many property owners are already in an inextremist situation. We rely on you, our elected officials, to protect our water resources, to protect our property. Without our water, our property becomes, well, not useless, but imagine the, what happens to property values when, when we have to truck our water in and stick it into cisterns. In a properly ordered priority...
I'm going to give you 60 more seconds. Go ahead.
In a properly ordered pri, thank you, sir. In a properly ordered priority of rights, the rights of all Pleasant View residents should take precedence, us, our posterity, someone who wants to divide up a piece of property because they have friends, or even their own children that want, they want to move into that piece of property. While that's laudable, it is a luxury with the way the water situation is. And so we submit that the overall situation of all the Pleasant View residents takes precedence over individuals to subdivide. We hope you agree with us. We thank you very much. I entertain any questions you have for me.
Any questions for Mr. Ambrosetti?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Say that the moratorium's granted, and the study is done, and the study comes back, that's it, water's gone. Then what?
Well, I don't think it would come back, water's gone. But it would come back as being severely depleted. In that case, as we mentioned, we would have to look at checking how we're using our, our land use, how, how we are allowing subdivisions in areas, if we're allowing subdivisions in areas that see water problems. And, and I might add, Ms. Duncan, in, in whatever we come up with over the next six months, there are other areas of Cootenay County that are being impacted as well, and they would love to see what we come up with over the next few months.
So what you're saying is restrictions on land use, then? That's what you're suggesting if the, the study comes back?
If you're saying subdividing, yes. I would say that's a possibility that could be a recommendation.
Thank you.
For people that have property, it's hard for me to understand why they can't be content with their property, but they want to subdivide, when we have such a big problem out there.
Bill, questions?
Yeah. First, what is your background as far as education? I mean, are you a hydrologist or...?
I'm not. I'm a Navy intel officer. And, and because of that, Mr. John Ri, Dr. John Riley, you may have seen some of the references to him, the late Dr. Riley, asked me to help him do a study on the area south of the Spokane River, but he was absolutely astounded by the area of what we call Pleasant View and the unpredictability of water. So I was trying to do an imagery analysis of the area to see if we could predict where the better wells were.
And my other, other question would be, a lot of what you, you cite is, as you say, you use the word numerous times.
Speak up a little.
Is it not working? Is it working now?
No, no, it's not on. It should be on.
It is on.
One, two, three, no?
I can hear you, Commissioner Brooks.
I'll pick up louder.
Is your red light on here?
Your what?
There's, there's a little switch here. Turn it on.
Another switch?
Right there. Nope, that one. There you go. Does that work now?
Ah, there we are.
You use the word anecdotal and anecdotal evidence, which means not scientific.
No.
Not fact-based. How long is it going to take to turn anecdotal into fact-based? And aren't we just going to do another 182 days and then not have this thing finished and want another 182 days? How long does it take to get this thing, to get, to remove the word anecdotal?
I understand, and it's a valid question, and, and Mr. Callahan has already told me that the most you can ask for anyway is a one-six-month extension, as I recall. So that's it. I mean, it would be up between six months and a year, but we're talking for a six-month now. So the answer to your question...
Is that, is that your...
When I go back and read the state law, which I have in front of me, unless Pat disagrees, what it actually says is that if you go beyond 182 days, you have to actually make an ordinance, explaining what's going on. So it's another step of, of work, if you will.
Okay.
So are we there now?
There's, there's also another section that allows for interim ordinances and moratoria, and that could potentially apply, so...
So, so to answer your question, Commissioner Brooks, to go from anecdotal, and when I say anecdotal, I'm trying to say, use a word that those who are in opposition cannot say, ah, you see, all you're going on is, is your own subjective observations. But in fact, if you look in there, you'll see many of the people, including mine, have actually put in real data about how much time elapses now to fill a, a cistern, for example. That's scientific compared to what it used to be 20 years ago when I first moved in and put that cistern in. So, so some of it is, when I say anecdotal, it hasn't been checked by a professional. But the answer to your question is, six months gives us what we need to take that anecdotal or check some of those wells against previous well logs and see just how bad... See, we think that the biggest problem is how much of a decrease has occurred over the last 20 to 30.
And what you said was, the well logs for 20 and 30 years ago are virtually useless?
Not for the purpose of comparison, but for the purpose of saying, ah, you see, there's plenty of water in the ground, because currently, that's what we do. I was looking at one, I don't remember which one, the one out off of South State Line Road. I think it's Min 49, if I'm not mistaken. And, and the submissions of the well logs are, like, back in the 80s, at least a couple of them. So the hydrogeologist or geologist should know that that just is not good science, as you know.
So they're, they're not worthless?
No, no, they are good for comparison purposes.
Because that's what you did say, and I went worthless?
No, no. You're absolutely right.
So if, if we were to grant this, this moratorium, there wouldn't be another request? Is that what you're saying?
I, I can't tell you what's going to happen at the end of six months. I can only tell you that right now, in good faith, our intent is to have some solid recommendations for you by July or whenever it would be.
That have some hard data backing?
We believe so.
Okay. And we did this before, though, didn't we?
No, not in, not in our area.
Okay, I mean, I, I guess it was the last time we all met, and we're talking about this. Has there any, done any study done or ongoing since then?
The, the inter-agency working group has met, and I've been doing, as a member of the inter-agency working group, I've been putting together some, some more pinpointed well locational data to go back to the other three members and talk more about how we want to proceed.
Okay, thank you. I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Who would conduct the study?
Well, the study's being conducted by me, by IDWR's hydrogeologist. His name is Dan, Daniel Sturgis.
Okay.
He's a member of the working group.
Okay.
Vlad Finkel is a member of the working group from Community Development, and Mr. Eric Ketner from Panhandle Health.
How long has this been going on?
We had our first meeting on November 1st.
So you anticipate that within a six-month period, we would have, we would be able to have, make some, draw some reasonable conclusions...
Yes, sir.
...as to the water situation. Okay, so the, the previous hearing occurred in early October. That's three months. This problem goes back beyond that or before then. Why wasn't this begun earlier?
Why wasn't it...
On your part as residents, if the concern is there, why wait for a decision on the part of the Board of County Commissioners?
Well, we, we, this has all been in the works since last November of 2018, when a subdivision on Car, a planned subdivision on Carpenter Loop was something that we felt was not in the best interest of the people of Pleasant View. And so we opposed that, and it took a lot of our resources and time through the winter, last winter, and then in the, in the summer, obviously, we, we were very busy with putting in our input for the new comprehensive... input for the new comprehensive plan. So, by the time that, by the time we got all of that in, it was time to start again buckling down and, and getting this. In fact, in fact, we've been in touch with Mr. Callahan throughout the last year.
Okay. So, basically, any study, any work that's been done dates back to November 1st of 2019, so essentially, two months.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, well, no, I, I don't want to say that. The, the Morphises have actually been busy plotting out all of the, of the, all of the wells, and so, they've been doing this for much more than just the last two months. The working group, which is separate from the PVNA, has been the last two months.
Okay. So, when you say the working group, you mean Department of...
The interagency.
The interagency. Okay, fair enough. I'm, I'm fine. You've answered my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity.
You bet. So, what I'm going to do at this point is I'm going to try to mix it up so we get viewpoints in opposition as well as those that are in favor. So, I'll call out the names. Heather Wilson, opposed, may wish to speak? Okay, thank you. I'll go to the next one. Also in opposition, Brent Wilson. Are you willing to pass, sir? Thank you. Dirk Anderson, also in opposition, wishes to speak?
I did speak last time as well. I have some different talking points, but I didn't speak last time.
Do you want to come forward? Do you want to present those? Go ahead. Thank you, by the way. We really appreciate this.
I am asking that this moratorium proposal be rejected on several grounds. As you know, this moratorium is being considered based upon Idaho Statute 67-6523, which states that there must be an imminent peril to the public health, safety, or welfare in order to enforce an emergency ordinance or moratorium. Multiple dictionary sources define imminent peril as certain, immediate, and impending danger resulting in injury, illness, or death. Henceforth, it does not appear to me that a moratorium on dividing land is warranted based upon the purposes of Statute 67-6523. This moratorium is being proposed in this specific area zoned rural, five-acre minimums, and no other areas in Cootenay County, such as the Ratham Mountain area, which is ag suburban zoning and two-acre minimums, which have similar climates and topography. This could potentially set a precedent for the entire county. What about the perception that this moratorium presents, that this area specifically has unique water area issues compared to all the other areas in Cootenay County, which might negatively impact everyone's property values? At this present time, there appears to be no quantifiable evidence linking land division specifically to water reduction in wells. Yet, a moratorium presumes that it is the land division process that is causing water reductions in certain people's wells. According to Statute 67-6523, it says that a governing board must state its reasons for the moratorium, but I have yet to see any reason stated by this board declaring imminent peril, which is required for a moratorium on subdividing land. The public notice hearing is asking for a moratorium based on concerns there's not sufficient water. However, in order to issue a moratorium, 67-6523 says the governing board must first state in writing its reasons for imminent peril, not the other way around. This is the cart before the horse. I do want what is best for the entire county. However, as it's currently being proposed, landowners in this specific area who legally wish to split their land, now based on the current zoning laws, are arbitrarily being penalized before any causal effect has been proven. Simply dividing land does not necessarily equate to a method or quantity of water use. In fact, what if land was divided and left vacant? How does the impact of water, it can be affected by household size, personal consumption patterns, sources play a large impact. While there are many challenges with water availability in some people's wells in this area throughout Cootenay County, there are also those that have adequate water. Based upon the absence of evidence of imminent peril or danger, I do not see how the county can issue a moratorium unilaterally on subdividing land in this specific area.
Okay, I'll have to stop you there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask our civil prosecuting attorney, Pat. Do you want to opine here, Pat?
Hold on. Well, whether there's an imminent peril to the public health, safety, or welfare depends, is something that the board is, within the board's purview to decide based on the evidence before it. Simply, you know, just because, you know, one speaker says there isn't, and you can take that into consideration certainly, but that's just one piece of evidence to be considered. So, but the decision whether, whether that exists or does not is, should be based on all of the evidence in there, including all testimony.
So, if I understand you correctly, it's not, the question of imminent peril does not simply apply to the renewal or the extension of a possible moratorium, but to having established it in the first place? Is that correct? Okay. Want to make sure that everybody understands that. Okay. So, we'll move on now, and I'll go in favor. Mr. Call, is it Reba? Do you wish to speak, sir? Come right forward. Three minutes. Here we go.
Thank you very much. First of all, thank you for all of your efforts and all of this. I know this is kind of a challenging issue. I was asked to present what our experience has actually been. I'm part of the association and kind of ground zero of some of this stuff. So, we have a, we are 3697 South Carpenter Loop, kind of smack in the middle of this, this whole area. And our experience is that we, when our well was created, it pumped out five gallons a minute. Now, it's, the last time we had it measured, it was three and a half. And the way we stumbled across that was water stopped coming out of a faucet one day. And so, you know, $20,000 in cisterns later, we are able to, you know, continue doing what we do, and a few animals here and there, you know, we've got some grassy water, not too often, but family of five, so, and a pretty typical usage. We don't have a lot of other needs for water that are, nothing extraordinary, certainly. And so, you can imagine how nervous we got when that happened, when the water just started to stop coming out. We had experts come out and suggest that we should put in twice the capacity. We ended up putting in about 7,000 gallons. And again, that, that cost us about 20,000 bucks. So, again, personal experience, pretty, pretty significant. I also, just a couple, I'll make a couple of points. I'm going to keep this pretty brief. But I also believe, and maybe you can help me with this, Mr. Callahan, there's a, it's incumbent upon a subdivider to prove that there isn't going to be an impact to surrounding wells when they're developing. So, I just wanted to throw that out there, too, because I think that's important in all of this. But, you know, I'm, I'm concerned that our process overall is, is not adequate. And I've got a little bit of an anecdote on that, but I want to first reiterate that there isn't any one of us in this group who thinks that we should be able to tell people what to do with their property. That's not what this is about. Look, with development and growth, what happens to our property values, right? I mean, we all know that that enhances value. So, none of us is opposed to this, just to be opposed to it. What we're concerned about is the water, and I'm living proof of that. When I talk about the process issues, we initially opposed the Carmel Heist development. And, and, you know, I wrote a pretty lengthy description of what my concerns were. The primary one, which I cited in my document, was water. And part of the documentation that supported that development included maps of wells and some discussion by experts about what was being impacted or what would be impacted. Our well wasn't even anywhere on any of those maps. So, I was very concerned about that process, and so, we're asking for some help here, and that's it. Not a, not a moratorium on building and construction and growth. This is, let's be smart about water, about natural resources.
Fair enough. Any questions?
It's like people, when they come up to speak, to state their name and their address.
Sorry.
Have you done that?
Oh, I'm sorry. We should have reminded you. Go right ahead.
Apology needed. What is your name and address?
Carl Reba, 3697 South Carpenter Loop, Post Falls, Idaho.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so the next one, and this is in opposition, Barry Dyke, may wish to speak?
So, my name's Barry Dyke, live on Signal Point Road. I came here as informational, trying to get information, just learned about this whole process. I'm so sorry, I'm a little disorganized in what I have to say and try to communicate to you guys. I don't know, have a, I'm a civil engineer by trade, have a civil engineering business. I have a lot of questions that I can go on, any questions on his presentation that I find, I can find issues to follow with. Basic issues, I want to, remember the gentleman's name over here, would like to really support him. I think he's on the right track here. The proponent here has suggested that, in his words, he thinks there is peril. There is no evidence. He thinks there's peril. So, I don't see any evidence being presented as of yet. My other question is, how is the boundary of this Pleasant View Association determined? I'm on Signal Point. If a study should determine what areas of impact, what aquifers are infected or affected by the boundaries that this proposed moratorium would affect, it shouldn't just be a blanket for the whole area. If they want to have one, if you guys propose to have one or suggest one, it should be limited, in my opinion, to what areas it's going to impact. The mapping on the Ratham Prairie, I'm nervous, sorry. Ratham Prairie Aquifer is not current to the current mapping that has been done the last 10, 20 years. There is a finger, several fingers that go down past, south of the, from the aquifer that do go south of the river, and they were not presented on the map there.
Yeah, you want to, you want to get closer to the mic?
Get down, okay.
Or speak louder?
I'm nervous. Excuse me here. I don't know what else to say here. I'd just like to support that. I'm against a moratorium. I don't think there's any evidence...
Okay.
...has been presented. I think the mapping is wrong. The well logs, you guys have asked about the well logs. When the well logs are drilled, I do have experience with wells, with water, with water systems. The well logs are estimated by the well driller that he has put out there that, hey, I guess there's 20 gallons a minute or five gallons a minute. There's no scientific evaluation of the water production out of that hole. So, it's really hard to use that. It could be used as a rough estimate, but it can't be used in a scientific study, but it was 25 and now it's only 20, or it was five and it's now only four. It could be the opposite. If you actually take a scientific test to evaluate the production today, it could be more, it could be less than what it was on the original estimate on the well logs. Well, thanks. I'm sorry to be nervous. Appreciate your time.
Okay, fair enough.
Good job.
Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Dyke?
No.
And, okay, speaking in favor of the moratorium or may wish to speak, Kevin McGrath?
I would like to speak. Hi, Kevin McGrath. I live at 1434 South Mead Road, sorry, West Mead Road. Used to be South Wilbur Road. We, we were involved, I'm part of the PVNA, involved with the presentation. Don't know Barry, understand where Dirk's coming from. And I guess the only point I'd like to add is that, yes, maybe some of the well logs are estimates. We don't have perfect data. Some of it's anecdotal. But the goal is to find a way to protect the water resources for Dirk and for the people that are there, and to find the process so we can prove that water impact to neighbors as subdivisions are made. This, this is a request not only to get the data and, and to find, but to find the process and the tools that we need to have accurate measures, because we don't have it, and that's what we're all saying. You know, we're, we're guessing based on it, we're making sure that it looks accurate as we can. We don't know one way or the other. So, the request besides just to gather the data is to find the tools to make sure that subdivision approvals are done in a proper way to protect other ones. And, and I think it applies to Pleasant View, but we know there's other areas that are experiencing the water, water issues, microflats, et cetera. It might apply there, too. So, whatever we come up here with, and you guys approve, and we support as, as the county and as groups' residents, that can be applied to everyone's benefit. So, that's all.
Thank you. So, any questions? Speaking in opposition, potentially, Allison Anderson? I gave your name, but I guess you'll have to repeat it along with your address.
I'm Allison Anderson. I live at 2410 North Chase Road in Liberty Lake.
Pull that mic in closer to you, if you would.
This is indicating Carpenter Loop?
Yes, we own property on Carpenter Loop.
Oh, I see. Okay, go right ahead.
Yes.
Okay.
Really, my husband made some of the points that I was going to, but you, you answered him about imminent peril, and I appreciate that. But I, I do want to make the appeal to you about having a formal unbiased scientific study completed on the current water supplies before issuing the moratorium. We've been sort of labeled as that developer, well, the developer, we just want to do a minor subdivision. So, we've never been approached by any of the people that have been here. They have stated even today things that aren't exactly accurate. And I think that if really we all are wanting the common good, then we really would have been approached, we would have been able to work, to talk about some of these things so that the best interests of all that are involved here are, are at hand. So, that's really all I had to say. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions?
Oh.
In favor of the moratorium, Kathy Dariar, is it? Dariar?
I'll pass.
You'll pass? Thank you. I'll go again in favor. Lloyd Moore? Thank you, sir. Rhonda Moore? Thank you. Cynthia Mead? Okay, thank you. Also in favor, Louise Telford? Did you want to speak, ma'am?
Thank you very much. My name's Louise Telford. I live at 2785 South Stein Price Road. It's a challenging road to get up to. We have lived there since 1976 or '77, and for 10 years, we hauled water because we, and we lived in a tent, a one-room log cabin, and that kind of thing. And I was much younger then and more daring, I suppose. But if I had to haul water today or in, in the near future, that would be very, very difficult. I'm a widow for, I don't, I tell the UPS guy, don't come up this road in the winter. So, I can't imagine having a truck to deliver water, and I'm on a fixed income, and I cannot imagine having to sink 20,000, 30,000 into a cistern to hold my water. So, I think that throughout the country, we've seen what has happened when the planning is not done appropriately, and people come in, and then in the future, there's water issues. So, what I'm suggesting is for you guys to think very, very carefully about this. And if I have to sell my property, which I have lived up there since the 70s, that will be, probably put me in my grave, and I probably won't be able to afford to sell it, because what use is that property without water? So, I just want you to carefully decide these issues, and not only with me, but throughout the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions?
I, I want...
Yes.
Have you, have you noticed diminishing water supply at your place?
I haven't.
But you might.
But I might. And I'm very, very afraid of that, because like I said, we hauled water for 10 years...
I know.
...in pickle barrels. I washed my hair in a cooler, and we took showers at the Y.
You don't want to go back?
I don't, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Thank you. In opposition to the moratorium, Edward from Sterling Road, last name? In opposition to the moratorium, Edward, from Sterling Road, last name? Flamenco, is it? Come right up. And again, this is in opposition to the moratorium. Was it Flamenco, did I say that right?
Ed Flamenco, 951 South Stein Price Road.
Okay.
This moratorium is not really...
Yeah, you want to get closer to the mic?
This moratorium is not really impacting me directly, but I'm here to oppose it for one reason, that if I owned or bought more property in the area, I don't want to fall under the same categories other people that own the property and have owned it for years, and based on the evidence that the gentleman provided, is not enough evidence to put a moratorium on future developments. So, I would say that I could go and hire a person like him to represent what I believe in, but it may not be true, we don't know that. So, that's my personal opinion. Whoever's opposing this is basically, hire the person to come up with a map, come up with all these well facts and all this stuff. In fact, I don't know that, I don't believe that all of it is true evidence. So, I oppose it for one reason, is that if I buy, excuse me, more property in the area, I would be willing to develop it, and I don't want it to affect me.
Fair enough. Questions?
No.
In favor of the moratorium, Heath Morpheus? Or is it short for Heath?
I would like to speak.
Yep, come forward, name and address, please.
Heath Morpheus, and that's 3689 South Carpenter Loop. And as I look at the map that was provided by the group here, I do appreciate that, and I think about the number of, the potential number of parcels and wells, if all parcels were allowed to be subdivided to the five acre minimum, in the Pleasant View region, and, you know, it's just, it's rather shocking thought to think about. I feel it'd be unreasonable to say that the land division would be disconnected from potential well drilling. Land division opens up the door widely to, it's hard to say, four or five-fold multiplication of wells in the region. One thing that brought my attention, the water scarcity, was our experience with drilling a 420-foot dry well, before having to drill a second well. And we're actually the, you know, a part of the group that sent out mailers and requested anecdotal, you know, information from all the residents of the region, and anecdotal information so far is all that we, our tiny little group with no funding, has been able to scrape together. And I would suggest that the burden of protecting our water supply should not fall on the shoulders of the residents of this region, we do not have ample resources. Actually grew up in a region in Indiana, that was, was a one-time rural, we lived on 10 acres out there, but it was subdivided up and basically turned into suburbia, and to see that again would be devastating.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, you said the 420-foot well, you drilled another one, how far away from your first hole did you go, and how deep did you have to go?
We had to go 360 feet on the second well, it was on the other side of our property, and fortunately, we had a decent amount of water, not a huge amount.
And what's its flow rate?
When it was drilled, it was at 15 gallons per minute.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, thank you. Okay, in opposition, Geneva Leonard?
I have to speak.
Thank you. Also in opposition, Joshua Leonard?
I'll speak.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, thank you for your time, my name is Joshua Leonard, I live at 812 East Wall 7, we're just down the road here. My interest in this matter is that we are actually looking, moving to this area, and so this ban, I think, is really interesting, because it, to me, devalues this area significantly. So, that's my interest in the matter. I'm also a professional by trade, and I deal a lot with statistics, so I was very interested in some of the numbers presented, I just want to point a couple of them out, and I'll be brief. I know that the gentleman said, I believe that 80% of people were in favor of the last meeting that took place, and 78%, but that's a very small number of people in the room. I believe that 564 notices were sent out, I think the people here are very passionate, so that might be biasing in the favor. That might be biasing in the favor, thank you.
Yeah, try to stay close to the mic, there you go.
Also, there were only three subdivisions proposed in the last year, so we're talking about a possible prevention of maybe three more in the next year, very small number, so the moratorium may not have a very large impact, numbers-wise, but maybe to the county and the perception of the county, might have a large impact. Finally, there are only 76 wells surveyed, out of maybe 564, assuming everyone has a well, or maybe a little bit less than that, so it's a very small penetration of wells surveyed, that the pie chart showed, you know, the number that were actually dried up, or had seen a significant impact to their well. And Tony, if I'm, or Mr. Anderson, excuse me, if I'm quoting you incorrectly, please correct me. And then, finally, the gentleman said that there was no way to predict the water, and the amount of water coming back in, and we talked about, you know, the rock, the striations in the rock, it's not an aquifer, so there's no guarantee. I'll reemphasize a point that Mr. Anderson made, which is that there's no correlation between actual division of property and usage of water. Let me check my notes, make sure I don't want to say anything else. Finally, you know, there's nothing to say that a study cannot be done in the time that the moratorium would have been in place, and that we could reconvene after the fact and consider rezoning or changes then. Thank you so much for your time.
Questions? Where did you move in from?
We came here from Georgia.
Oh.
So glad to be here.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you so much.
We're going to do a couple of neutrals here. Bart North, neutral, may wish to speak? Come forward, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Bart North, I'm a licensed engineer, civil engineer in the state of Idaho. I own and operate North Engineering, and I reside at 1700 East Jobber Avenue. I didn't come here to talk tonight, but after listening to the testimony, I felt the need to stand up and say something. Would you mind stating the name of the gentleman that made the initial presentation?
It's Mr. Androsetti. Mr. Androsetti, forgive me.
Terrible names. That was a good presentation, a lot of the information he provided was, was well-presented. I guess I asked the commissioners, what is, what is Mr., what is the presenter's credential? Is he licensed?
Well, I think he already responded to that, he said he was in naval intelligence, and basically was relying on another expert for the information, so he's already responded to that.
Well, my only regret here is I only have three minutes, and it's burned.
No, go right ahead.
I'll try to, I'll try to make this quick. I was just looking at the Pleasant View area, and I have some experience in this area, in fact, I think that we're, I was involved and coordinated one of the only hydrogeologic evaluations that's been done in the roughly 12-square-mile area, and I would, I feel for these folks that are, have a limited water supply, it is limited up there. When we did Trails End Estates over in the drainage to the west, we found water was very, very scarce. So there's no, in my opinion, and I'd submit that there's, there is a scarcity of water up there, and I applaud their efforts to try to get something taken care of. One of the things that I would ask the commissioners to consider with regard to a moratorium, is to consider the actual cost of what presenting or pulling together an actual study would consist of. An example would be the well logs. They are, they are useful for the depth, and et cetera, et cetera, but they are limited in their accuracy. I can make 100 gallons a minute come out of a 50-gallon drum for, you know, two minutes, or, you know, we don't, it doesn't tell you anything about what the basins are that the presenter described. He accurately described what the, how the water's made up there in those fractures. But the cost to go in there and get real data, that would give you the ability to say, here's this basin, and how these basins are connected, would be, would not, they won't even be able to touch it in six months, is what I would suggest. In fact, they'd be lucky if they got their inter-agency committee to obtain a consensus on protocol and how to, how to go about it. For example, the cost...
You're probably down to less than 15 seconds, go right ahead.
The cost to...
Go ahead, finish your thought.
The cost to get a depth and on a well, and lift the casing off, is, you can, you can damage the well just by doing that.
Right.
I think this study would cost a million dollars, and take five years to do, and generate any meaningful data.
So, you, so you labeled yourself as neutral, are you still neutral?
Yes, I think something should be done, and I'll say this quickly, I'm representing one of the three projects that is currently under consideration.
Under consideration.
We did drill a well, and we did do a well drawdown test, an actual well drawdown test, and I can, we can attest to the recharge rate of the well that we're proposing to serve the subdivision. Unlike any of the other wells up there, there's not very much drawdown and recharge data, I'd say there's almost no drawdown and recharge data available, and I don't think they're going to be able to generate that in six months. And I know I've outrun my time, so I'm just going to throw a hail mary.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Here's my hail mary. I think, I'd like to say this, for the benefit of all the residents up there in this 12-square-mile area, they should spend a million dollars and study a comprehensive, a centralized water system that utilizes aquifer water. Rathamis Mountain was...
Fair enough.
That's how they, that's how they generated water.
Okay, thank you.
Good water.
Thank you very much.
Was that, and on the neutrals?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we have some that are undecided.
Okay, let me take a couple here that are undecided. By the way, the county isn't going to pay for this, so if it's 1 million or 3 million, it's not going to come from the taxpayers. So, we entertain questions at the end?
I was just wondering, are you going to allow people to speak, or are you just going to stop after a certain number?
Well, we're going to try to get through all if we can.
Okay.
Yeah, if possible. Okay, so we have a couple here that are undecided, I guess it looks like Mitch Lawrence? Want to speak, sir?
Sure. My name is Mitch Lawrence, 1477 South Pleasant View Road in Post Falls, and I am undecided. I think that I've lived in six different places, I've drilled four different wells, and I've owned six of them. I've had two of them go dry, in southern Idaho, and one in Liberty Lake. The one, both cases, I put new wells in, and they had unbelievable production. In Liberty Lake, which is really in the same vicinity that this one is in, and actually, a member of the audience here owns my previous home, the one well that I drilled had 3 and 1/2 gallons, we hydro-fracked it, got to 5. It went down to almost nothing. I drilled a second well, it got 150 gallons a minute, and we had it tested, and it sustained that kind of production for a long time. So, I've experienced both, I understand the anecdotal sides of this, I think the thing I was trying to understand from this hearing, was what kind of science is going behind this before we start changing state legislature, and how people own their property, and how they conduct their business on their own property. And I have to be honest with you, I haven't seen a lot of really convincing scientific evidence that says this is a convincing, compelling argument for me. So, I would still say that I'd love to see the study, but I am not convinced, with my own experience with dealing with wells, and drilling myself, and trying to do this myself for as many years as I have, I have not yet, am convinced, other than this engineer that just came up and said, this is a kind of study that's going to take a lot of money, and it's not just going to be people anecdotally supplying information on, my well went dry. Even the last gentleman from Indiana that came up and said, I went dry...
Georgia.
Yeah, and, no...
There was one from Indiana, I stand corrected.
He was from Indiana, I was listening, thank you very much. And he said that he sunk one in this side of the property, and it got three, and he went over here and he got 15. That's typical in this kind of property.
Sure.
And I've drilled them all over the country, in Idaho and Washington. So, I'm just not convinced that a study is going to be done, that's going to satisfy any kind of scientific rigor that we need to address the issue. So it comes down to an issue of legislative intent, and how we manage our property and what we have.
Fair enough.
That's what you need to think of, thank you.
Questions?
Excuse me.
Excuse sir? Question.
Do you do drilling as your business, or...
No, I've just owned a lot of different properties.
Okay, all right.
I've just been on the paying end of that business.
Sounds like you've had experience.
I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, also undecided, Tom Hanley?
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Tom Hanley, I live at 969 South Signal Point Road, and I come in here tonight undecided. I didn't even know my address or my property was considered in the, what do they call this, Pleasant View area, so I didn't know I had, I was in the area of impact, so. I did get letters over the last year or so, from the association, I'm not a member of the association, and I just thought it was some whiny group that didn't want any development going on in the mountains up there. So, I just said, well, it doesn't affect me, I'm not in the, on the map, I don't think, where I, the ones I saw in the past, but the one that came in, in the mail for this hearing here, my property was in there. So I've attended no previous meetings, so I'm in the area of impact potentially, in what we're discussing tonight, and I guess one of my concerns is the value of my property. I live on 25 acres, theoretically, I could divide it and put three more properties on there, and make money in case I want to go to a retirement home someday. While I'm living on it, I like living on lots of property and getting my privacy and watching the animals run through. I also am concerned about money when it comes to, or my property value, if I run out of water. So, I didn't know I was in an area potentially running out of water. I have a good well, as far as I know, I've never had any issues, but you never know, could be tomorrow. So, I don't want my well to run dry, and I'm also not interested in any areas of high-density housing, I don't know if that's being proposed, or there's anything in any zoning nearby, but I certainly not looking for condominiums, I think I saw the word in here, so. So I have no opposition, come in here neutral. I would say I would support, can't hurt, six months, I'm not selling my property in six months, maybe somebody else is, and wants to divide their property, but I can't see any great harm in giving people another six months, or in addition, six months after that, to get professional analysis done. So, in conclusion, I would support a six-month moratorium, just based on what I heard tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, questions?
How long have you lived at your property?
I've owned my property for 22 years, I built my house, I'm coming up on 10 years.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. In favor of the moratorium, and may wish to speak, Caleb Worth?
Good evening, Caleb Worth, 1039 South Rapids Bend Lane. So, I am a plumbing contractor by trade for the last 22 years, as well as a septic, septic installation contractor, and my concern is not necessarily with the amount of water, but the amount of additional septage. There is no sewer on that side of the river, everybody is on septic systems. With the amount of homes or condominiums, if the land... With the amount of homes or condominiums, if the land does not accept the septage, it could potentially run off into the river and contaminate the river like it does in Spokane. So in my opinion, that would cause imminent peril of life due to the sickness from raw septage getting into my water system. The roads will deteriorate a lot faster with the traffic, so that would have a cost impact on the county, and they would deteriorate. The Department of Environmental Quality is required to conduct studies on the impact of septage on land, and if there is no study done to this point, then there should be. I used to own a land application site, 200 acres, that the Department of Environmental Quality had to approve, and when it rains and the saturation of your land, the septage rages to the surface and it disperses on its own. It doesn't have any course. It will go with the easiest path, and that is what my main concern is, is my neighbor's septage coming towards me into my well, and then my family being contaminated. I have eight children, and they're all young, and the last thing I want to do is have to move from where we are, where our kids go to St. Dominic's School, right down the road, and I believe more in the pollution aspect than I do the water dissipating aspect of it, even though I have seen quite a few people driving up and down the road with containers of water. Plus, in the wintertime, you have road restrictions in the spring, so if you're too heavy, you can't bring water in, so you're out. You have no choice. So I just want to make sure that the pollution aspect is spoken about, and also, we need more police officers and safety officials to control the area.
Okay. We'll have to stop you here. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Yep. In opposition to the moratorium, Sean Gordon?
I'll pass.
Thank you, sir. Also in opposition, Travis Blanchard?
Travis, Christopher Travis Blanchard, 471 South Signal Point Road.
Okay.
As a new property owner to the Pleasant View area, I came here tonight mainly as an educational process, and I would like to change my position.
To?
To, what am I on now?
You are. You're opposed to the moratorium.
I would like to approve.
So you want to be in favor of?
Yeah, in favor of.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Been a long day.
Okay.
And I agree with the previous speaker's comments about septage. That's my main concern as well. Water being a concern, our well produces 10 and 1/2 now. Who knows what it's going to do in the future, but we are at the bottom of Signal Point Road, and as the old adage goes, poop rolls downhill. So septage being my main concern, that's all I have to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fair enough. Thank you. Okay. Since that was opposition, let's go in, no, that was in favor now.
Yeah.
So let's go back to opposition. Peter, is it T-R-U-O, Trucks?
Yes, please.
Yes, sir. Did you want to speak?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
I actually spoke that I didn't want to speak, but I have a thought.
Okay. Share your thought. And you are in opposition. Your name and address?
Yes, my name is Peter Trung. I have a property on Carpenter Loop, although currently I live in town here at Court Lane.
But we still need an address. Is it 37?
3716 South Carpenter Loop.
Thank you.
In fact, I bought close to 30 acres from one of the gentlemen who is in favor of the moratorium. I, to be honest, I thought that perhaps one day, maybe sooner or later, I would like to subdivide my land for my family. And so far, I've done some research and asked for bids on digging a well, and I've been told that digging a well on this part of the area is hit or miss.
Okay.
And I said, why is that? And the answer was, well, you live on a hill. So deja vu for me, because seven years ago, when I bought another piece of land in another state on a hill, my well on a property that was existing had 6 gallons per minute. Next-door neighbor had 26 gallons per minute. Next person over had 50 gallons per minute. The next man over, I don't know, but he's been there, he was there for 50 years, and my third year I was there, his well went dry during the summer, and now he was hauling in water. So I asked the local well dweller, what's the deal? He said, well, you live on a hill. My point is that, isn't that the nature of, or that comes with the territory when you come and live on a hill, that you're going to have a hit or miss? My property now on Carpenter Loop, my next-door neighbor has a natural spring that's been flowing for years and years. The next neighbor over also has a spring that's been there for ages, and he only tapped into it recently because it's been flowing nonstop. Thanks be to God, my property has a spring, and it's flowing year-round. So when I come here and I hear the scientific data and the argument and the concerns, obviously I have concern too, because I live on the hill. However, my property and two neighbors down have constant flow of water on the spring. So I don't know, I have a concern, but I don't know what is truth. And I ask you, the commission, if you permit this moratorium, should it not be on some sound scientific data, rather than some fear or anecdotal evidence? And the gentleman who made the presentation said that they will presume or have a study for further scientific data. My concern with that is, with all scientific data, it can be skewed.
Okay. I have to stop you here.
Yes. One last point, though.
Go right ahead. Make it quick.
My, I would question the validity or the result of that scientific data, regardless of where it is, especially if it's going to be headed by a person who actually supports the moratorium.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you, sir. Questions? Okay. Speaking in favor, potentially speaking in favor, John Tunison, is it?
Yes.
I'm going to hold strictly to three minutes, folks. Please, gather your thoughts. If it goes later, we won't, hold it, sir. We won't be deliberating tonight.
John Tunison, 4950 South Carpenter Loop. We've lived in Post Falls for about eight years. Our well, to this point, is fine. There's no problem. Over the past few years, we've noticed, well, basically water being hauled to different home sites. This past summer, I don't know who it is, it advertises hauling water. All over the place, we would see signs, whichever way you approached our area, there was a sign there for hauling water. My question to you is, I've read the comprehensive plan that's for Kootenay County numerous times, and in that, you have tenants that basically protect the homeowner from these perils. My question to you is, everybody's talking about all this money that has to be outflowing, and I can vouch that this community here has spent a fair amount of money, and I'm retired, a lot of these people are retired, a lot of these people work for a living. We don't have unlimited resources. Let's say this goes through and property's developed. We go through this again, and we have to prove it again and again and again. I say to you that the onus should not be put upon the homeowners that are already there with existing wells. Why not the developer, those who stand to basically either have a new home? We're not talking individual homes. We're talking about subdivisions or multi-tracked places. Put some of the onus on them and some of that financial responsibility on them, rather than trying to prove a negative. It's really tough for us to do, you know, because like everybody said, water flows downhill, and it depends upon, you know, pardon my French, it's a crapshoot. You know? And that's pretty much it.
Okay. Questions? Thank, yeah, go ahead, Leslie.
No, I don't have questions for the speaker. I have questions for staff. With the mention of the condominiums, does this zoning even allow?
The reason condominiums were touched upon, I believe, is it's a form of subdivision that's conceivable in this area. Would be unlikely, frankly.
Is there a minimum, what's the minimum acreage?
For a condominium?
No. For this area?
Aren't we zoning rural?
There is by zoning district, but generally it's 5 acres.
Okay.
Rural, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. What are we up to in favor?
Um, just in favor.
No, opposed. Okay. Okay. In opposition, Louise, is it Cholant?
Uh, Scarlett, I'm actually in favor of the moratorium as well, and I'll pass.
Oh, so you're changing from opposition to favor?
Yes.
Okay. Want to change that? All right. So we'll go to another opposition. Chris Carey? Name and address, please.
Uh, Chris Carey, 3866 South State Line Road. I may have written-
You're going to have to get near the mic, ma'am, please.
A lot of people have already made some of the points that I had planned to make, but I would just like to reiterate that this moratorium effectively removes an individual's property rights for a period of time, and we all know that real estate markets change, and sometimes timing is critical. It's easy for the public to have a knee-jerk negative reaction toward developers, but very often, those developers are just a local family or individual who made an investment in property and sacrificed for many years in hopes of eventually being able to realize a return. I am one of those families. This timing and this market is the opportunity for us and others. Timing is critical, and delays do matter. My second point is that I don't see that we can base an emergency on, these people have had already over a year to collect information, and it sounds to me like they're far from being able to present the information that's necessary. The first presenter showed us that the geological situation is hit and miss. We've heard that from several people, and so after we finish all of this costly research and data gathering, where we, we're just going to, we're just going to be in the same place that we are right now, that is hit and miss. As a property owner, when you buy a piece of property, you take the risk of whether you'll find property or whether you'll find water, or whether that water will last on your property. And it's not up to us property owners to pay for other people's research to prove a point that's really already been proven, that the geology already dictates what's been proven here by everybody's comments. And so I don't see any reason to be having, to be imposing a moratorium based on such flimsy excuses. And so I request that you deny the request for this moratorium.
Okay. Questions? No.
Sorry. I do, you have a well on your property right now?
Yes.
And what, do you have a-
We just, we just drilled within the last few months, a new well on our property at the top of the hill, and we got 10 gallons a minute on that well, and two other wells in our immediate area showed 60 and, oh, let me see, yeah, 50 and 60 gallons a minute.
And how deep?
I couldn't tell you that.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. In favor of the moratorium and may wish to speak, Karen Decevy, is it?
Just out of nowhere.
Thank you, ma'am. Also in favor, Mike Dorar?
He just stepped out.
He just stepped out? Okay. We'll move on. That's okay. Put it under there. Art Dorar?
I'll pass.
Thank you, sir. Linda McGrath?
I'll pass.
In favor? Thank you. Victoria Ambrosetti?
I'll pass.
You'll pass? Okay. And you were in favor, yes. Okay. Also in favor, Linda Fleming?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. In favor, Pat Howard?
Yes.
You're passing?
Please.
Thank you, ma'am. And then we have, okay. Also in favor but does not wish to speak, if you change your mind, let me know as I go through. Catherine Bays, does not wish to speak. In favor, Carrie Rebey, does not wish to speak. Eileen Morphis, is it? In favor, does not wish to speak. It looks like Lugo Wold, in favor, does not wish to speak. Bill Asbell, in favor, does not wish to speak.
Can I say something real short?
Yes, sir. Come right up.
Doesn't have a lot to do with this. Bill Asbell, 17080 West Laurel Lane, Post Falls.
Okay.
We're just off of West River View. We subdivided in 1994, took a year and a half to finally get before the planning commission, because we were small. Had 22 acres approximately, divided into 3 fives and a six. The different outfits had us change the road three different times. Had to put a dry well into the river, which took forever, and spent about $60,000, put four septic systems in, built our house, moved in in July of 95. Have not sold any of the lots, and about six or eight months ago, found out from the state, we can only provide water to one facility, one house, after we put a 3-horsepower pump in to satisfy everybody for the subdivision. So just because you subdivide, doesn't mean you're going to be able to use the water, and we're on the aquifer.
So when you say the state, sir, I have a question. Was that the Department of Water Resources?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Let's go to opposition. So opposed to the moratorium, Jessica Gordon does not wish to speak. Jackie Jacobson, opposed, does not wish to speak. Is Mike Dorar here?
Yes.
Did you wish? And you are in favor, sir.
Yes.
Uh, Mike Dorar, 15508 West Mead Road.
Okay.
Um, putting the load on the people that live in the Pleasant View area to prove that there's enough water for the subdivisions is crazy. We've lived there forever, and now we have people coming in and wanting to make money, which everybody has the right to make money, but they should have to prove that the water's there and it's not going to hurt the other neighbors. Because the people that are subdividing, they're leaving. They'll be there this year, next year, they'll be to Montana. They don't care to stay here. They're just here to make money. That's all I have to say. Any questions?
Questions? None. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. So the remaining are in favor, and I'll read the names off. Thomas Wold, or Tom Wold, in favor, does not wish to speak. Teresa Finley, in favor, does not wish to speak. Steve Finley, in favor, does not wish to speak. It looks like, I guess it's Dwayne H. White, in favor, does not wish to speak. It's, I guess Rebecca Brown, in favor, does not wish to speak. It's, I guess Rebecca Brown, in favor, does not wish to speak. Jean Arnold in favor, does not wish to speak. Jessica Telford in favor, does not wish to speak. Come right up, ma'am.
Jessica Telford, two seven eight five, South Stein Price Road. So my concern is that we're already in a drought, and when there's more houses and more water being pulled, the trees also suffer from that, and there's really no fire services anywhere on that side of the river. So I'm wondering if the county has any plan for that for us, because that does put us in real danger if you think about other communities that haven't really planned for that, and like, take for example Paradise, they, they put too many houses where there shouldn't have been houses, and then the whole area burned to the ground. So that's my concern. And I also am just a little confused why it's falling on the community to do all this research, rather than the county having a plan, like for the future, like, so, right now it's at five-acre parcels, which seems like enough, but maybe, maybe it's not enough for that area, that particular area. So maybe just trying to plan ahead, rather than being behind the ball, is my concern, my concern.
Okay. Questions?
On your property, do you have a certain square footage around your house that has been cleared of brush?
Oh, we do, yeah, but that's not my real concern. My real concern is that there is a drought happening, and the more people using water, where there's already a water shortage, will create more of a drought. So there's a lot of forest up there, and there's no one to come protect our homes, because the roads are very small. There's, a fire truck will not get to my house in time, and it will burn to the ground.
Bill? Okay. Thank you. Gideon Telford in favor, does not wish to speak. Judith Cowan, Judith Cowan, forgive me, in favor, no indication?
No comments.
Oh, your comments are here, so I'll read them. Item number one, ALU, which I guess means additional, well, dwelling unit or living unit. Mother-in-law houses effectively brings the density to two houses per five acres. This should be against the zoning of one house per five acres. Item number two, do these, this is a question, do these units have one well or two? What about separate septic systems? Item number three, what happens when mother-in-law leaves? Are these units allowed to be sold separately or rented? This is concerning, since the sneaky way of increasing densities in rural subdivisions puts more stress on already stressed water availability, further decreasing water for everyone in the area. And again, this is from Judy Cowan, four six six eight Carpenter Lou, Post Falls. And the last one here is in support, and it's Eric, it looks like Beckstruck, did I say that correctly?
Bochstruck.
Bochstruck, did you want to speak, ma'am?
Uh, no, no, I just turned it in for you.
Okay. And you are in support. So that concludes the testimony. And normally what we do at this time is consider going into deliberations. And so before I entertain that motion, I'm going to, I'm gonna consult our attorney once again. Pat, you wanna read, or whatever may be relevant in the statute in place here about imperiled, or imminent peril? Or your interpretation, sir?
Well, the statute just says if a governing board finds that imminent peril to the public health, safety, or welfare requires adoption, I'm paraphrasing, of a moratorium upon the issuance of a selected class of permits, it shall state in writing its reasons for that finding. That's as far as the statute goes, and there haven't been any court decisions, at least any appellate court decisions in Idaho that have interpreted that. So I think that the, to me, what that means is that there is a, something that is a danger either now, or could, would become, could become a danger very soon to some aspect of public safety, or wel, health, safety, or welfare. So that would be something for, for the board to decide, based on the evidence and the record from tonight and from the previous hearing, plus all the comments that have been made in writing and the other written materials. So it's, it's, I have a pretty, it's an open question in the state as to what, what specifically constitutes. So I think you basically have to go by, you know, dictionary definition, and I think, you know, the factors I've outlined are probably, are what are gonna guide you in determining whether or not the moratorium is appropriate.
Okay, you've answered my question. Do we, go right ahead.
I'm willing to take a ten-minute break and then deliberate, but if you guys, you know, whatever you guys wanna do.
Fine. You're fine. So do you wanna make a motion that we enter into deliberations after a ten-minute recess?
Um, we need to move to close the public hearing first.
Okay, so let's do that first.
I move that we close public testimony and enter into deliberations.
Are you taking testimony for people who basically do not want to testify?
They already had their opportunity, sir.
Yeah, I was out of town, so I was not able to, uh, I just, necessarily, for my property owner, and I do have-
Do you wanna come forward?
Thank you.
State your name and address and your position, please. That is to say for or against or neutral.
I am for the moratorium. I have lived here for, oh, approximately twenty-five years.
Name and address, please.
Mark Stietman is my name, and my address is five two two South Manor Heights Drive. I live up on Signal Point. The area has been plagued recently, in the last three years, with shortages of water. I myself and my neighbors have experienced this. We had to ration water and haul in water. Just this summer, I have seen signs placed strategically all along West River View, down to the state line, all the way from Signal Point. I have pictures here of, of those actual signs from the company who purchased a truck, Air One, just for the purpose of hauling three thousand five hundred gallon tankers up to our area to service people whose wells have run dry. What we have is we have a situation where I'm very familiar with wells in the area. I've made quite a survey over the years at the county offices, looking through microfish permits. And what we're looking at is a scenario of wells that are having to be dug deeper and deeper, where typically you could dig a well at four hundred and twenty-five feet, such as the well that I have. Back in nineteen seventy-six, that produced about seventy gallons per minute, which is a pretty huge well. These days, we don't have that type of gallons per minute. What the variable is that many people here have spoke to this evening is not having any real criteria. The criteria is, is what the static level of the well was when the actual well findings were taken and made a, a point of record when the well was actually drilled. Many of the people that I have talked to have stated that their static levels have decreased. Mine in specific has gone down by at least twenty-five feet, and we are having problems basically not having enough water.
You have thirty seconds, sir.
Okay. And we are in a situation where we have lived here, we spent the money to buy these homes and these properties, we pay, where I live anyhow, some of the highest taxes, except for people who might live right on the river. And to take and put us in a position where we would have our homes valued at close to nothing, because as you know, if you don't have water for a home, you're not going to sell it, and it's not gonna be worth anything. And that's something that these people who have been here, spent the money, paid the taxes, should not have to go through. We all know that it is-
I do need to stop you here, sir.
It is the county who makes the money of the permits, and it is the people that pay the taxes.
Fair enough. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so, did you wanna speak, ma'am?
I can just take questions.
No, ma'am. We take public testimony, we don't typically take questions, and the questions that you might be tempted to ask will probably be anticipated in deliberation. So you'll get a chance to hear us express our views. Okay. Did you wanna re-
I'm asking a question about opinion, I'm asking a question about, is it the legal part of it?
Pat?
What's your question?
So I have ten acres that has already been divided into two five-acre parcels, but what you're talking about here is like a forty-acre parcel, and it has never been subdivided.
Okay, ma'am, you wanna come up to the microphone, please? This is unprecedented, so if anybody else has questions, you're out of luck. Go right ahead.
So I'm asking, is, is it-
Hold the microphone, George. Name and address, please.
Pat Howard, twenty-two forty-three Signal Point Road, Post Falls. So I have two five-acre parcels that are subdivided already, so I can put a home on that second five acres. I'm living on one.
Right.
What we're talking about here is a person who has at least ten acres and wants to now subdivide it, and put one other additional home on another five acres, is that what we're talking about?
It would affect, yes, it would affect only those applications, or, it only affects from the, the point on which is, on which it is adopted forward. It does not affect existing parcels. Or, or even any subdivision, or even any subdivision applications that were submitted and accepted by community development prior to the date of the moratorium.
So in other words, if the moratorium is adopted, it has a start date. Subdivisions that are approved prior to that date, or applications submitted prior, are not affected. Pat, fair statement?
Yes.
So by a subdivision, you mean you're gonna take a ten-acre parcel and divide it into two fives, or it could be-
It could be ten, it could be twenty, it could be eight, doesn't matter.
Ten or more.
Ten or more, but it could be divided into a place for ten different houses?
Poten-
Potentially?
No, five-acre minimums. So if somebody has more than five acres-
If you've got fifty acres and you wanna make ten five-acre lots, you can do that. Yep. Okay, that's it, folks, for questions, okay. One and only. We don't typically do this. Okay. So once again, do you wanna restate the motion?
Sure, I move that we end public testimony and enter into deliberations after a break.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Villius?
Aye, and so we will take a ten-minute recess, we will reconvene at seven fifty-five, and we go into deliberations, and we'll see you in ten minutes. Thank you.
Okay, so we're about to enter into deliberations and I'll explain a little bit about this process. When we enter into deliberations, there's absolutely no audience participation. It's a discussion, debate, rock throwing among the three of us. We are at liberty to consult our attorney or our director of community development and ask any questions that we might need for clarification. Normally what happens when we do this is chairman, I typically go last and I'm going to request of my co-commissioners that I go first and I'm doing that so that I can take the lumps because he who goes last gets to hear the other arguments. So I'm going to put myself out there so that they can argue against me if it's okay with them.
No.
Bill?
Oh, no.
No?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, and that's what goes on here. So if I have any questions or Commissioner Duncan or Commissioner Brooks do, they can certainly ask staff, okay? So this typically doesn't take very long, so I'll start off. Okay, so the request before us is to declare what would be by the statutory limit, a six month moratorium. And so by definition, it's a limited timeframe. Six months is six months, no more. It can be less, it cannot be more. And so basically, we're automatically restricted. Now, some of you might be thinking, well, what happens if there's no conclusion after six months? And the answer is, I'm not going there because that's not what's before us to be decided upon. So we're only concerned with the next six month period if in fact, this body were to decide to proceed with the moratorium. And so, once again, I want to iterate that this is a limited time and there's no consideration in these deliberations as to what comes thereafter, okay? Somebody brought up the issue of property rights. If I had a dime for every time somebody brought up property rights in this county, I wouldn't be sitting here, I'd be independently wealthy and retired. And so, let me say something about that. There was one individual who said, well, you know, if I want to sell my home and I'm in the midst of a moratorium, these are my words, not necessarily hers, that it could potentially endanger the saleability of the home. Okay, let's say we do nothing and the well goes dry. What do you think your home's going to be worth? Something to ponder, isn't it? I've had that happen. Not here, back in New Hampshire, day of closing, I'm selling the house, no water. I don't know whether it was a pump or what, but I had to disclose it and in fact, the transaction did go through. But in some situations, it could have been a lot worse. So that's something that has to be considered. I think what I'm really saying here is because this is, if it were to be approved, a temporary measure, I don't see this as a property rights issue, okay? Number three, the science. It's true, much of the evidence that was given by Mr. Ambroseetti is anecdotal, but that's because the scientific studies and the time hasn't been allocated yet to be able to come to a scientific conclusion. Can we do that? I don't know. I think this is a very fluid process. Water is by definition not static, it seeks the lowest level. Will there ever be a scientific conclusion? I don't know. But given some time, there could be more facts than we have today. So from that perspective, I think science requires some time and so I'm inclined to say, you know what, maybe we ought to give it some time. Let's go to the question of impending peril. When I asked our civil deputy prosecuting attorney, Pat Braden, there's also the question of potential. I cannot make the statement that there's impending peril here. I don't think we have enough evidence to make that point. But what I do see is the potential for consequences that could be dire and unless we address that in some form over some period of time, we won't know that. And so that's something that has to be considered as well. And then the question comes up, and we hear this often, what are the primary functions of a county? And somebody reminded me that we actually act as administrators for the state. The legislators that you sent to Boise passed the laws that govern what we can and cannot do. In essence, we have a couple of primary functions. The first one is an ugly one, which is to collect taxes and we do that for the entire county, not just our county, excuse me, not just the county operations, the 800 employees and the specific functions that we perform, but all the taxing districts in the county. So that's your highway districts, fire districts, the school levies, whatever. And incidentally, in case you're interested, the county component of your tax bill typically is about 25%, okay? The other function is to provide for the safety, health, and welfare of the public. And I see this discussion today falling within that purview. So I'm not going to waste any more time. I'm not going to go six months, I'm going to go four. So my recommendation is that we in fact, do proceed with a moratorium. And let me tell you something, I'm also a Realtor. I'm going to take hits for this. Realtors hate moratoriums. But you know what? I think there's compelling evidence for at least some time to be able to come to some level of scientific conclusion. And I don't know if we're going to get there, but I'm not willing to go six months. I'm willing to go four months commencing, excuse me, commencing February 1st and any petitions that are before us or come in prior to that period of time for subdivisions would have to be exempted from this process. And so it would commence February 1st, so that's February, March, April, May, and it would conclude May 31st. And now, beat me up. Who wants to go next?
Oh, you?
Okay, Bill?
I'll go six months. And the reason I will, I mean, I have like this... What do you want?
No.
I'm having trouble with the button, I'm sorry. Is that okay now? I apologize.
I would go six months, I would go the whole full six months. And I too, I'm a former real estate broker here in Cootney County. I believe in solid, good development, but I also was sitting here sipping a bottle of water and I realized that's next to the air we breathe, the next most important thing that we have available. And it would be, I don't want to get into dramatics, but terrifying, it would be really upsetting to turn your tap on some morning and find no water or flush your toilet and have no water. I wish, and we can't do that, but I would like to see this thing start sometime like in, I don't know if you can do it, can you do it on a date forward? I mean, not now, not start the moratorium now, but start at say, in May and go six months.
That is certainly possible.
Okay. Because that's what I would like to see done, is I would like to see it over the summer and in my opinion, that's when we're going to see the most stress on our water systems. And I think that would provide us the most information. But the downside of that is people can come in between now and the moratorium and file for, start doing some development. So that's my, I would like to see it start one June and go June, July, August, September, October, November before the winter and the snow starts presumably and get some good data. It would also give the people in favor of restricting of building out there some more time to, before the moratorium starts to collect data. And it would also give the people who want to do their splits, time to get them in. So that would be my compromise position was a full 182 days starting one June.
Now... Leslie?
Looks like I'm going to be the unpopular one tonight. So I have to go with the wording that we're given. We've been asked for an emergency moratorium. So for me, and the statute talks about imminent peril, so emergency and imminent peril is kind of where I started on this. One of the definitions of imminent peril I looked up is an American legal concept where imminent peril is certain danger, immediate and impending, menacingly close at hand and threatening. So I'm very familiar with people who have water issues. My neighbors live on the rim rock and so frequently I've had my in-laws and my neighbors come over to shower and stuff because I live over the aquifer. And many people have had, you know, lots of problems and it's not fun and I've walked hand in hand with these people. The issue I have before me now, I think that it would have been more credible to ask for a moratorium on building permits because if you're truly not wanting to touch the water until the study can be done, then I think that might have been a more direct way to go because, you know, many people have already testified, they've subdivided, but they haven't built. So a moratorium just mere on subdivision, I don't think is going to help with the emergency, the imminent peril. So that's kind of where I'm looking at. I do want to see science, I do want to see the study of results, but when we choose where we live, I think that we each have certain things we have to deal with. Like my in-laws and like my friends on the rim rock, they have clay, they can't even wash white clothes in their homes because they come out orange. And then they do have the problem, one, I know he's on his third well and, you know, they've had kind of nothing but problems over the last 21 years. So where I live, it's fire danger. I've been dealing a lot in these last 11 months with people who live on the Spokane River and they have people in their backyard, in their play, you know, in the public waterway playing and it's causing an issue for those people who live there. So I kind of look at this like, it's an unfortunate situation and I wish that it wasn't happening and that there was a more economical way maybe then to set up a whole community water system. But to me, I can't find, looking at statute, looking at the requests before me, a legitimate reason to put a moratorium on subdivision for these reasons stated. So that's kind of where I'm at. Like I said, I do feel for the people, I really want to see the study, I'm just not sure that a moratorium on subdivisions is helpful at this point.
You mentioned limiting building permits. Go ahead.
Well, just in the fact that if we're looking at imminent peril, then I don't know how many things are there, you know, how many properties are there. But to me, that would have been a more legitimate request than subdivisions because let's say that there's, I don't know, 50 properties and all of a sudden now, you got 50 more wells while you're trying to do this study. And don't get me wrong, I'm not advocating for putting a moratorium on building permits at all. I'm just saying that to me, I don't see how subdivision has a nexus with this water problem.
Okay, so what, I'm sorry David, did you want to... Okay, so what if we took an approach that said, okay, we have these, this one approved and two pending subdivisions, correct? There are three?
That's it.
And that's going to result in some number of homes, it's a five acre minimum, so it's going to probably be one home per five acres?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's going to total some number of homes, whatever that is?
Twelve.
Twelve homes. What if we were to agree to say, for some period of time, be it the four months, be it the six months, there will be no more, we're not going to stop subdivisions, but we would issue no more building permits than those 12. Would, to allow for the study to go forth so that we do have the science. Now, I'm going to say something unequivocally. If we decide to do this, whatever form it takes, and you come back to me, I'm speaking for me, I can't speak for my colleagues, and say, we need more time, don't waste your breath, you're not going to get it, not from me. So if it can't be done in a limited period of time and you're going to tell me we need two years, I don't want to hear it, okay? If the science isn't there, in four months or six months, it's not going to be there in two years. So at some point, we've got to plant the stake. But anyway, what do you think?
Well, I don't think we are legally allowed to put a moratorium on building permits because...
I don't believe you are either.
No, it hasn't been advertised.
We haven't advertised that way, I don't believe it'd be proper form.
Right.
And probably not legal, but I'll defer to legal.
Correct. Yeah. Moratorium on building permitting is not properly before the board at this time.
Okay.
It was a good thought.
So let me, I just want to be clear.
Good idea, though.
It's not an idea. It's merely an argument that I saw in my mind that if this was truly an imminent danger, one that is pending like in the next week or two or month or two, then that to me would have been a more legitimate request. It doesn't mean that I would have agreed to it, I'm just saying that in my mind, a subdivision, that takes months, sometimes years, and then the building permit process. So to me, not allowing more subdivisions at this time is not really the issue. Now, come back with science, come back with your report, come back with, hey, you know, they are all interconnected and any more develop in this area, then I'm happy to take a look at it. But that's just where I, my conclusion that I came to.
And that's why they're asking for the time, because they don't have the science yet conclusively. Anyway, Bill, thank you, but I have to disagree with you.
What would you like to do?
I believe that your rationale is good.
Mm-hmm.
Because you've got to take it through the summer. I am not going to go that far. If they can't conclude this in four months, I'm not interested in going any further. I realize, you're making a valid point because you really should take this through the summer, but I can't explain to the taxpayers why I've just agreed to a moratorium that's going to go on for eight or nine months. It's going to be hard enough justifying four to six, so...
Well, there'd be no moratorium until it begins. And it would begin one June or one May and extend through the summer.
Except now you've imposed a period of uncertainty between now and June and if any of these folks are looking to sell their properties and somebody says, excuse me, but I don't know that I want to go through with this because you're facing a moratorium that could take us through the end of the year. So basically, now you get into the potential property rights issue. That's my concern.
I think the paramount concern here is the people who are there who could lose their water. And we need to give them time. Six months that extends over the summer is the best time to get as much data as you can scientifically. And I don't think it's going to preclude anybody from selling their property now and there's nothing to preclude them from selling it then. Explain to somebody that there's a temporary moratorium on splitting. I mean, I just, I don't, I see that as a much smaller issue for the residents and these residents are also the taxpayers.
Leslie?
If this is an impasse, I'm fine with continuing deliberations to a future date if we could sleep on it and think about coming together, we each have our own positions. So I'm just offering that as a solution.
Well, talk to me, Chris.
You want a delayed implementation?
I do, until like the May, June, well, May, June, July, August, September, October. That would be a great, if I were, I'm thinking as if I lived there, when would I want to go out and gather data? It's not now and it's not during the foot of snow we're going to have. I would like to do it in the summer when the water is most stressed so I could show, I mean, you can't have water nine months out of the year and call it good. It doesn't work. So that's why I'm proposing a delay in the implementation and the beginning, I much don't care whether it's one May or one June, but just so it extends over the summer period, that's all. And I am, I'm with you 100% Chris, there's no second bite at the apple. If you don't have the information after that 182 days, sorry. We're not doing this again.
Sure.
Continue?
Sure. I've never seen the three of us be this stubborn before, by the way, so...
Yeah.
Seriously.
Longest deliberation in a year.
I've seen passports be a lot more stubborn than this, though.
Oh, well, yeah, that's probably true, but this board hasn't been, oh, anyway, I think your recommendation is a good one. We appear to be at an impasse. Let's continue. Are you thinking of a date uncertain or do you have a specific date in mind?
We'll check the schedule, deliberations can just be noticed prior.
Okay. And, okay, so then it would be to a date uncertain?
Yeah.
You want to make that motion?
I move that we continue deliberations to a date uncertain.
I'll second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
No.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. So deliberations are continued to a date uncertain, I imagine it won't be very far off. I suspect it'll, I'm guessing it'll be, probably be within a 30-day period. And again, deliberations are exactly what you witnessed, they will be during the day, not in the evening, and we will live stream so you can watch as we do this, okay? And again, we do this during the day because it is just among the three of us, okay? And so, having said that, the time is now 8:18 and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you everyone very much.